January thirteenth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the municipal council will now come to order. Roll call, Craig, Ted?
Here.
Mike? Pam?
Yes.
Devin?
Yep, sorry. Devon's on the other place, yeah, I'm sorry.
We will open the regular session for the order of business. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Smooth.
Second?
Second.
Mike, roll call Ted?
Yes.
Mike? Pam?
Yep.
Devin?
Yes.
The agenda has been approved as printed. Deputy Sheriff McMillan, do you want to give your report, please?
Sure. For the month of December, you have forty-eight documented business checks, thirty-eight patrol sessions, three bar checks, one council meeting, one traffic stop in which a warning and a citation were both issued, one school traffic patrol, one wanted person. And then for your calls for service, you had one accident with property damage, one animal welfare check, which was determined the horses were well fed and okay, one medical incident, and then one mental illness in which the subject was transported to the ER for evaluation. Questions or comments?
Are there any questions for the Deputy Sheriff McMillan? Thank you very much. All right, hopefully you reviewed the minutes of the December ninth. And if we can just approve them. Are there any edits to the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, is there a second? Roll call vote Ted?
Yes.
Mike? Pam?
Yep.
Devin?
Yep.
Minutes of the December ninth, twenty twenty four, meeting have been approved as printed. Hopefully you've studied the financial report for December. Are there any questions regarding the financial report? Did you see what I added to the bottom of the meeting?
Uh huh. Thank you very much.
On the bottom of it, Pam, we requested that have a allocation for what we've already spent for lost funds. What we get, so we have what we have left. On the backside of the table.
I think I did one.
There you go.
Yeah.
I appreciate you doing that, Kristi, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is there a motion to approve the financial report?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote Ted?
Yes.
Mike? Pam?
Yep.
You.
Financial report for December has been approved as printed. Bills for December. Are there any questions on those?
That's sixteen hundred for the trees, that's the last of it, right?
Yep.
It's all eight.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Pam, is there a second?
I'll say.
Roll call vote Ted?
Yes.
Mike? Pam?
Yep.
Devin?
You.
Bills for December have been approved as printed. Residents' concerns?
Cold bow.
No residents' concerns? Okay, we will move on to old business. The third reading of ordinance one twenty seven, adding a new section limiting the use of occupied recreation vehicles. Kristi, do you want to read just the portion number?
Section one, new section. The code of ordinances of the city of Liscum, Iowa is amended by adding a new section sixty-nine point one-two, occupied recreational vehicles, which is hereby adopted to read as follows. Sixty-nine point one-two, occupied recreational vehicles. Occupied recreational vehicles may be parked and occupied on private property no longer than fourteen consecutive days of continuously occupying, living in, or using a recreational vehicle, with a maximum of twenty-eight days total in the calendar year. Additional days may be approved by contacting city, by contacting council to request a variance.
Is there a motion to approve the third reading?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? Roll call vote Ted?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Devin?
No.
All right, consider consider approving ordinance one twenty seven. Is there a motion to approve ordinance one twenty seven?
I'll say.
Ted, roll call vote Ted?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Devin?
No.
All right. So that does a pass, is she ready? Consider city attorney options. You heard from the Newton attorney and the Marshalltown attorney at the last meeting. You now have a proposal from the Lynch Dallas firm at Cedar Rapids. So what are your pros and cons on the two that you heard at the December meeting?
Caldwell and Brierley, he was very well-versed in every question that we asked. Had been doing this for years and years. Said that if he wasn't able to help us, there would be somebody from the office, probably the Randall Caldwell, that would, that would help us out. The Patrick, I'm going to say Street, wasn't able to ask, answer questions. Fairly new. So I don't know if he would be learning as we learn. I was impressed with Caldwell, Caldwell-Briarly myself.
I was also the Patrick Street attorney through, that firm that they was in wouldn't, wouldn't be any backup. If he was gone, we wouldn't have any backup, so.
That was in Marshalltown?
Yes.
And?
So I'm in favor of Caldwell.
Newton had backup?
Yes.
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 Okay, take a look at the proposal from Cedar Rapids.
Lynch Dallas?
He is the attorney that we worked with on the greenhouse. There's a lot of attorneys also in that firm that do city work. He's done it for many years also. Price-wise, I guess I didn't check between the two of those. Yeah, it's towards the back. Two seventy-five for him. The associates is two fifty and the assistants is a hundred and fifty.
What's?
As well as two hundred dollars for out-of-court cost. And a hundred and eighty for the assistance.
They don't have to come to Sparty either, what he's done?
No. No one that's, we have travel time.
Right. Just need to Marshalltown. About half hours.
So from what I'm hearing, the Marshalltown attorney is number three. Am I correct on that?
Well, two or three, I
Oh, two or three.
I guess I'd like to motion to hire Caldwell and Brierley. I believe that would be my
Okay, there's a motion on the floor that we hire Caldwell-Briarly from Newton as city attorney.
Okay, I have one question, have you, have we talked to any of these towns that have used them? Like personally?
I talked to a couple. One's looking to, part of the issue is this guy works one day a week. They were used to having one of these guys up here retired. And so he, that's all he did, was city work, for the most part. So when he retired, there's not somebody there every day. They was used to quicker turnaround response. So this gentleman evidently doesn't look at it in between. He comes on Thursday, he works, he goes home, he's retired.
So is that that Richard Sazinski?
Yes. Yeah. That's that Richard guy.
But the backup is Randall Caldwell?
That's what I took it.
That's what I understood, but I'm not sure if, you know, maybe a court date is set on a date that this guy's already got. And his retirement plan is something busy, even this guy will step in. Guess we didn't ask him that question. But that was the responses I got from a couple of the towns.
He said if he wasn't available, there would be backup.
You know, if he's gone, decides to go to Florida for a month. You know, I don't know.
I don't know.
That was their that's what they said. After used to having somebody on call all the time.
I know I'm not just going to talk about that, but isn't that seem silly? If they're close to, or if they're on retirement, because aren't we going to have to do this again when he's done that?
I kind of wonder if they're hoping to get somebody in, and this is just their patch in between
So, yeah.
The two.
It's a firm?
Yeah, it is a firm.
Oh, so they're hiring the firm, not the man?
They've got three other attorneys.
Yeah, there's three other attorneys at that firm.
So, yeah, it's a firm, but they've done a lot of, so I'm wondering if he's just matched to get the intern. They did not ever say that, but.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll say.
Okay, there's a second. Okay, there's a motion, a second, to hire Caldwell and Brierley from Newton as a city attorney. Roll call vote. Ted?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Devin? All right. Discussion on the twenty twenty-six budget. We have a couple pieces of paper. One is the front page of the actual budget. At the top, and then I give you another sheet that just gives us, it's easier to read from now on, it's like, you can look this over. If you want to, and you have questions, that's fine. Our taxable valuations have gone up, which I was kind of surprised they went up that much. Because it seems like they went up, they took a big jump last year. So I was surprised they went up this much this year, especially in egg. I didn't think ground was, had gone up that much. So down on below, this is items that we can levy for. Your general fund, that's the top line. The max you can have is eight dollars and ten cents. So that we have that amount in there. Egg land, I can't talk tonight, egg land is three dollars and a fraction of cents per thousand valuation. We can always get that. And then there's two other lines that we have available to us. Is the liability and property insurance cost. Last year we paid an insurance twenty-eight thousand dollars. Just a small fraction of that is for the sewer stuff. And that has to come out of the sewer funds. So say even twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and, or nine hundred and fifty dollars, because it's very minute out there, that we paid. So we get sixty-five thousand. Sixty-five, sixty, almost sixty-eight thousand dollars, just from regular taxes. But everything keeps going up. So I always, I've been putting in money to levy for that. I put different options that we can put in there. We can throw in the twenty-seven thousand for the budget hearing, public hearing, but we don't have to stick with that. We just want to throw that in there to begin with. We can't go over that, but if you decide you want to put fifteen in there for some reason and realize, oh, we need more money, we can't go back and raise it for the, the tax levy hearing.
So you think the twenty-seven's enough?
I think the twenty-seven's enough. It's just if you want to raise what, what is it? It's not a dollar per thousand, but I had figured it's seven, it's almost eighty cents per thousand. You know, it doesn't seem like much. You know, it raises some of them thirty dollars a year and some of them eighty dollars a year, but by the time you get the county and the school and, you know, and unfortunately, if you live in town, a lot of times it comes back, well, the city has raised our taxes X amount of dollars. Well, it's not just the city, it's everybody else, because everything's going up. So I'll let you guys decide what you want me to put in that, on this paper, actually. It was the first number I threw in there, so. But we can change that number. Then the FICA and IFRS, we can tax a little bit to help cover those costs. Last year I put four thousand, not sure where I left it at that, because then we didn't quite need that much. So I've lowered it, just so we don't get an excess funds in there next year. To work off of. So I've lowered that to two thousand from the four thousand. So this, we don't have to decide until next month. Because next month, we will have to set the public hearing date, and I have to have it to the auditor, county auditor, before the March meeting. She has to have it by March.
So the IFRS and the IFRS, what that comes down to is we need to figure out if we're going to hire somebody else to help Darwin?
Well, that was, a lot of that's included in there.
Okay.
So, because I based it off of what we paid off the last year's. And so we had lots of help last year.
Okay.
So, yeah, if you want to think about that, if you want to go ahead and make a decision, and then we could just move on with that, and then set the public hearing next month. I don't know, thoughts?
So on the liability, property, and self-insurance costs, we paid in twenty-four, twenty-eight thousand, sixteen dollars?
Yeah.
And then we're only levying for twenty-seven this time?
Yeah, last
I don't have lots of
No, last year we levied for twenty-two.
Okay.
And that's what we're bringing in for now. I mean, we do have some funds in there we can help pay for those. This is just helps us so we don't spend a lot of our budget, you know? That would be a third of the budget on just keeping everything insured. And we're going to add, be adding building. You know, and that'll add at some cost.
Well, it's like everybody else's insurance, some of it's gone up seventy-six percent.
I know, it's crazy. But I, the cities usually have thrown out what their agents have told them it's going to go up, but I haven't seen anybody going, yeah. I think they're all worried about a computer system, some of them. But usually by now, some of them said, oh, ours is going up ten percent, ours is going up fifty percent, you know? Last year, the last two years, some of them said twenty-five percent. Ours had nothing like that. Are the gas pumps insured? I had talked to her, I think so, I'll make sure.
I know that, that new building, yeah, you just, you just said the new building too.
Yeah, that'll go on, we'll have to pay some this year, but definitely next year. Well, we haven't heard when they're coming to up those gas pumps yet.
I don't really see, foresee any changes we should, we get it done this one, it'll be done next month. I'll have to make sure it's done, if we have something discussed next month. So we need a motion to approve this?
We're just
Set the budget hearing or just?
Well, we can't, I don't have it on the agenda as a set, I think we'll do that next month. But, I mean, just, so what are you thinking for that?
The twenty-seven thousand?
Yeah. That's what I don't think.
We don't need a motion, it's just general. I'll go ahead and put that in there. So we can get that set then for next month. There's some items at the bottom for expense-wise. Like to think about, City Hall really could use an upgrade. Some of it just, it's not functioning, I just make it worse. But it'd be nice to get something that was functioning. One of the things my husband keeps bringing up, I'm stuck in that closet. You know, if there was a fire that started towards the front, I'm just stuck. I would like to have a door put in the backside of that, that comes into here. I can't get out then, you know, that door, I can get out. If I think I have my keys with me, I go out the fire department door, so, or this one. So that's one item at least I'd like to get done at some point, safety, yeah. Put that in there. Darwin's been, keeps having trouble with the tractor. We've had it for several years. Would like to think about trading it in and getting something different.
Money.
I know, but it just keeps going. We just think, okay, we're set, and then something else.
The only thing I had on here was, I'd like to, I looked into it a little bit. I just thought that maybe in the budgets we could start putting in, it just, you can play with the number, three grand or somewhere around there a year, and we can just start putting climbing equipment up at the old school lot. I know there was a want for some older children's stuff. We're not talking slides or any of that, just like, there's literally just single pieces of climbing equipment you can buy. And if you just wanted to start installing that here and there, I think that would fill a need, a want from some people, so. It was just a thought to put that in the actual budget.
Anybody else got any ideas?
Well, we probably need to think about replacing those top panels at some point in time. The sound panel, which we can't figure out what to do.
I thought we wanted to leave those since we did this.
Well, I think we didn't know what to do with them.
We wanted to leave them, but new ones was probably the help even though.
Oh, for sure.
I don't think, I don't think we knew what to do at the time.
No, we didn't, we never decided over here. For sure, we just don't do the job because it's been built in. What stress is this?
So it might be something that we could start building again.
Yeah. That door over there is kind of falling apart, yeah. Because it's the original.
That one back there?
Yeah. So I don't know.
The last we talked, we couldn't find replacement panels, correct?
Yes.
Well, we had panels for the Was it replacement or like? They just didn't think they were going to do a lot of good.
Yeah.
Well, the cost was crazy to put in a bunch of those too, it's harder to deal with.
Oh, another thing we need to go in is the kitchen sink.
Oh, yeah.
Is it not working?
Well, it's old and it's
Well, it's leaking.
Had, well, it's had water damage and it's rusty. It's just, it's served its purpose anymore.
Yeah, it's used when we put it in.
Right, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's still, I guess it's still functional, but it's just not
And one thing, if you get a USDA, another USDA grant of any kind, it needs to be handicapped accessible. Home center, yeah, so.
Like a farmer's sink, is that what it's?
Well, just so a chair could get underneath it to actually use it.
As a handicapped person, those don't help much.
Well, that's kind of what I figured, and so I've never brought it up, because we haven't been getting a grant, and I'm like
I don't even have one of my own home. I don't want it. I'd rather have the cabinet space.
Well, that's kind of my thought, it takes a lot of the cabinet space out. But I can look into that again, that's when we got the last grant, how long ago? And that was one of the things that, you get another one, you're going to have to have, and like cushion stuff that's around the drain pipes in the back.
Yeah, you got to like bulletproof the plumbing, because the knees are going to be bashing into it and whatever.
But I'm like, no. So, anyway.
When we replaced that sink in there, Darwin and I talked about the fact that that cabinet at some point in time was going to have to be replaced.
The kitchen cabinet, the sink, the whole sink cabinet. Oh, yeah, because it's just, it's more than just a sink. It's the whole cabinet.
That, that's always, I, that's pretty old.
So
Might be old.
Maybe, yeah.
I'm going to, I'm going to touch a sore spot. What about putting new cabinets in the kitchen?
I'm not paying attention, I don't even ever use them.
They're not actually good and sturdy.
Do they need a place left, do you think?
I think we need a sink cabinet worth.
Well, depends on what you get for the sink cabinet.
Well, I guess that's true.
You know, maybe just some trim on the outside of those, or
Somebody can, yeah. I think the cabinets themselves are pretty
The cabinets themselves are good and sturdy.
They just need some updates.
And maybe it's new countertops. I know this counter out here that in, he never wants to stay on, but maybe somebody finally took it off. I don't know. I'll put the countertops on there. Okay. Are we finished with that? All right, update on trailer. I have not heard of the cabinet, so. Could you just be along with that?
Do you know, Pam?
They got some last, like April or something, is what I was reading. But it only hits it from Elmore to Gifford.
Yeah.
So they still need from Gifford to the
Because I think that bridge, that Stecor Bridge is involved in that.
There is a bridge.
There hasn't been anything in the paper about them getting it. I, I could
I figured it'd be a big sweep law announcement. Are we done with old business? New business, consider designating the Grundy Register as the official newspaper. Is there a motion to designate the Grundy Register as the official newspaper? Devin, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote Ted?
Yes.
Mike? Pam?
Yeah.
Devin?
You.
All right. I'd like to appoint a personnel committee to assist with employee hiring, should we need some summer help, and work with Kristi and Darwin on some things like that. And Pam and Mike have agreed to serve on a personnel committee for twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve these council members to this committee?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
That's something that should be more discussed, like, I don't have a problem. I'm just, I don't think it should be discussed up here.
Well, it's just, it's just a matter of helping with the hiring as far as
You'll still have to answer last.
Still have to
Can you, can you say?
Okay, roll call vote Ted?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Pam?
Pam? All right, um, committee reports. Anything from Ben?
I didn't hear anything tonight. Junior, Jared, or? I thought Junior was gonna show up tonight, but I'm not sure how much Junior's gonna be, as you're helping. He's very, very involved in weekends, like running it.
I thought he, I. Is he the mayor anymore?
No, he's on jobs.
I thought he was stepping off.
Yeah, but I thought he was supposed to come and do that himself. Anyway, Jordan said that the.
His wife posted on Facebook that he had made the decision to drop out of Liskum.
Oh, he dropped out?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh. So, but I thought he was coming to.
Cause he's more.
State that.
So he's, he's dropped out of the R E M S.
Yeah. So it's Jordan and.
Ryan.
Brian.
Brian, yeah.
Is, is Melinda still?
So now we've bought that new unit and we've got two people using.
So we really have Ryan. We have Ryan. And if, um, I don't know if Lance is still gonna have a driver.
I think so. Well, we just paid him.
They've got a driver, yeah.
We just paid him for.
And he had gone up calls.
Yeah.
So the only person we have is Ryan. Where does Ryan work?
I have no idea.
They just talked about it.
Anyway, they got the defibrillator, or that Lucas device, they've been trained on it, and it's in the truck. So they can use it, so that was his big news.
So is.
Jordan said.
Is Junior running the ambulance out of the union?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Wow, we need to recruit EMs.
Bad, bad.
So then that takes me out, they're gonna drive her also.
Wow.
And she was dragged and so too, so.
Wow.
And Marshalltown, so that Unity Point is, when are, when are they gonna stop transporting?
This is serious.
That won't be good.
When, what do you mean? I, I didn't know anything about, tell me. Unity Point's gonna stop transporting?
Uh, they were talking about it. Marshalltown's trying to figure out what the heck they're gonna do, I think.
They haven't had enough, we've had one meeting about transporting, but there's never been another.
That's good. Going that direction though, it seems like.
Just partly because they're having a hard time finding.
They must have too. Yeah. I think they have one official paramedic.
Yeah, there was more paramedics than there are, yeah.
So are we gonna have to get with Conrad or get with Union or get with somebody so we? I don't think we can get with Union because we don't go same direction. That's the issue. Yeah, but I thought Junior said he can go any direction he needs to go.
Okay, insurance. Well, and if you call.
Him?
Yeah, you have to call Tarden County, you have to call Union, I can't remember.
But I think it's also hinges on what your insurance would pay you.
Well, and they don't get paid very well for the insurance, so. I'm saying that, whatever. I mean, they get paid, but insurance companies really don't pay them very well. And it has, it has to be written up as a sign language. Like, if you're in extreme pain and it's your gallbladder, and, well, Jerry can't drive you. But they'd have to write it as immediate, I don't know, there's a certain way they have to write it for the insurance company just to pay it. But for that, you could call anybody here and they could take you.
But by the time Jordan gets here.
Yeah. You hope somebody from Marshalltown comes. And I don't know how far B Certs will come. I mean, they came to our house, like, ten years ago.
But would they come to Liskum?
But I don't know that they would come to Liskum.
Cause they're Grundy County, they can't transport to Liskum.
Right.
Can they?
I think they, yes, because they can, they can go where, you could go to Grundy with them.
Right.
They'll take you wherever they want to. I had that discussion with Jordan. Because they are a transport, B Certs could take you. Where Liskum isn't a transport, they could just go and.
Hank, you need to become an EMS person.
Unfortunately, I am beyond my prime. You don't wanna, you don't wanna hear about my CPR record. I'm O and two, okay?
I heard it. Oh, my.
Touch that machine, Hank.
So the next, next letter says, we are in desperate need. Desperate need of EMS person.
One, one note about that, you know, getting someone else, I think the reason that there was an issue was that Unity Point, if we got somebody else to pick somebody up here and transported them someplace else, then Unity Point said that they would no longer help us out. And I think that was the hammer.
I think, I think that was the issue.
And if Unity Point says, we're done, we're not gonna transport anymore, that's not gonna be an issue.
No. The other issue is though, and it's going around the state here, uh, do we pay taxes specifically targeted for EMS?
No.
No. Cause it's not a, what do they call it, a mandatory service or something like the fire service?
Yeah, they, they, yeah, they've got a.
The fire districts are, are set up physically, financially, right? Cause our, part of our tax money has to go to a fire department and covers us for fire. It's not that way for EMS. What, was there a half a dozen of them this year that, that went for the? And, and what it amounts to is the same thing that happened with the nine eleven thing. Is that, you know, hey, our general tax fund, our county general tax fund uh, refuses to cop, uh, cover that because we're up against the tax limitation that the people that live up in the stratosphere there uh, have decided that in order to make everything better, all we have to do is say, we're gonna cut taxes. You know, so are, are we gonna, and we're sitting out here, you know, living basically without EMS coverage. Cause that's, that's where we're at.
And to me, they should make a line for EMS.
And I think that was a major discussion at that meeting that I attended.
Yeah.
Was that there needs to be that.
Yep.
Same line as fire.
Agreed. Agreed, many of us agree. And I don't, what was there, a half a dozen of them or so this last election round? Half a dozen different towns and groups, uh, put that up for an election, and I think all but one of them, uh, passed. One of them failed, if I remember right. I, I don't, my memory isn't as good as anything else of mine, so. But, yeah, uh, but if, if that came a point, you know, and that's the reason why B Certs doesn't wanna come here, is quite honestly, they don't get paid to come here. And by paid, I mean, they're not funded. Uh, Grundy County, Marshall, or, uh, uh, the, the city, uh, um, is, their tax money goes to fund them, just like our tax money goes to buy that Lucas device. You know, that was a great investment.
So is Junior.
Hopefully it'll look good in the museum someday.
Well, he's got people.
He's got a crew.
He's got a crew, like, he's got two or three more. As of last month, he had two or three more. Very interested in, a couple of them maybe even was starting a class.
He cannot transport them.
Union can transport.
Union, yeah, well, he's a.
Yes.
Yeah, Union can transport.
Cause he said he can take you anywhere you wanna go.
So he's gone to Ames, he's gone to Waterloo, he's gone to Grundy. It's just they have to be careful on how they send it to the insurance in order to get anything out of the insurance companies, so.
Does Alvin have it? Anything for EMS?
They've got something.
They have first responders just like us, but they can't, they can't transport.
Do, no, I know that, but do.
Steve Center can.
Yeah, but do they have even a very good crew?
Alvin's got a pretty good crew at Austin either, but I don't know how they cover it, so.
I don't know if it's night or if it's day. Because sometimes they come here.
They have a bunch of people in tears over there.
They, they were working together.
Right, they were coming here.
And I know a lot in the daytime when Strang was still on it, he spent a lot of time going that direction in the daytime, but. And then they get called back to the hospital, but, that's where the hospital is moving.
That might be a route. If we could sign a mutual, a great, a mutual aid agreement with B Certs, uh, and it may very well involve some material, you know, hey, cough up a check here.
Wanted to.
In order to get that, maybe, maybe that's the answer. Uh, but, but right now, I, I, I know a couple of cardiology folks really well, a lot better than I ever wanted to. Uh, and when I get a pain in my chest, uh, it's not nine one one, it's, mom, get me in the car. Cause all I have to do is travel a mile north, and if I have to call and somebody pound on my chest, I'm calling from Grundy County, not from Marshall County.
That's a sad thought.
It is a sad thought.
Well, and how long, how long is Unity Point gonna string us along?
Oh, I don't know, probably.
Well, and most part is the insurance company. An ambulance that ever, used to come here all the time, always got paid by the insurance company.
Yep.
As long as, and even if, even if the person didn't have insurance, there's something in the clause that always, I think, covered. But now, today, if they're not getting.
What I remember from that meeting is that Marshalltown transports so much that they don't have time to make runs.
And that might be, that.
That's because they don't do anything there, they've got a. They're transporting to Ames, to Iowa City, to Des Moines, and they don't, literally, they don't have units to come.
Yep.
Or people.
Well, and, and they're a business, you know, for all we can whine about, they're a business. So if they can make all this money, uh, and there are three or four ambulances, if they can keep them on the road driving people around, then, hey, sorry, sorry to the rest of you guys.
Seems like every night when I come back from Ames, there's a Unity Point.
Yep.
Ambulance going to. All right, um, streets and alleys, anything?
Um, at some point, we're gonna have to talk about the sidewalk thing.
Oh, true.
Uh, Iowa Supreme Court, let's see if I can find it just.
Oh, that's an attorney.
Oh, yeah.
Conversation.
Um, said snowy. Iowa Supreme Court ruling, this was in, uh, on Casey C I. Ruling shifts sidewalk liability to cities. A recent Iowa Supreme Court ruling, the cities could be held liable for sidewalk defects, these are the waters. But in our ordinances, we have property owner's responsibility for maintenance. The abutting property owner shall maintain in a safe and hazard free condition any sidewalk outside the lot and property lines and inside the curb lines or in the absence of a curb. Any sidewalk between the property line and that portion of the public street used will improve or improved for vehicular purposes. The abutting property owner may be liable for damages caused by failure to maintain the sidewalk. So, yeah, this is something the attorney needs to look at because we have so many properties that do not have sidewalks at all. And then we have on here, still, the council may order the construction of permanent sidewalks upon any street or port in the city and may specifically assess the cost of such improvement to abutting property owners. Do we want that on there?
Depends how much you wanna do with sidewalks.
Well, that's just it.
To me, I'm thinking of marrying them.
Taking them all.
Yeah, exactly.
Mine's coming out.
Exactly.
Apparently.
Well, and some of that is, uh, yeah. You have to, the city, I think the city has to prove that they contacted those people and say, you need to fix it, and you have this timeline, so.
Well, and then it says, um, I don't know, it's got sidewalk standards, you've gotta have so much length and width and depth and, I just assume get rid of this, but I don't know if we can, so I guess that would be a question. You've gotta have the grade, the elevation, it's gotta be inspected.
Well, that's, that's for certain towns. It probably has to be.
Well, it's in our ordinance, so I.
That is?
Yes, it is.
Oh, I don't remember reading all that.
Yes, it's in chapter one thirty-six of the ordinances.
Not that I like it either, but it's pretty typical verdict for towns with sidewalks.
Can be ignored just like any other one.
I mean, yeah, we haven't really done a lot about it in a long time.
Well, I guess we need to figure out if, if people can take their sidewalks out, is that, you know, rather than fix them.
I would think it'd be up to the town to take them out. If we're deciding to remove the sidewalks, I would think that would be our responsibility. It's on, it's on the town's property. I mean, if you got a sidewalk from, from the, whatever you call it, the curb up to your house, then that's your responsibility.
But yet it says, if there needs to be work done, that it's the homeowners.
Yep.
The abutting property owner may be liable for damages caused by failure to maintain the sidewalk.
Back in the day, when we put that in, whatever they put that in, you know, concrete, what cost?
Yeah.
Fifteen dollars a yard, and now it's two hundred dollars. I mean, I don't think you can put that on to the property owner to.
Well, I, I.
Don't think you want to.
To do that.
Definitely, so, I, I guess that would be my question. I would like to look at this and, and, you know, um.
And since that's been up, he may know a lot more about it to.
Yeah, cause this was dated January ninth.
Yeah, that's been a hot topic all, I mean. I mean, the Supreme Court actually did that September.
In June.
I'm like, so I'm not sure why K C C I felt the need to bring it back up.
I'd see that. Turn to the pot.
Yes, must have been a slow day.
K C C I reached out to eleven metro cities asking if they changed their city codes following the June twenty twenty-four, that's why.
Cause that one town, that was.
New Hartford, New Hartford, yeah.
I mean, I think this is another thing on our list to talk to the lawyer about, we need a lawyer, so.
Yes, yes.
There's probably fifteen hundred things like that you could dig up that you guys could go down the road like that. What should we do? We might be liable, but we're just a small town out here, and I would be really surprised if a lot of these, you know, Giffer or anybody else is worried about it, but. I think it might be cheaper to just take a chance on the liability issues and to replace all the sidewalks, you know?
We have some really bad sidewalks, if somebody would happen to.
But I don't think we're talking about just having it replaced, like, we're talking about maybe ripping them out, right?
Yes.
I'm talking about ripping them out, I'm not.
If you tell me I have to replace, whatever, ripping it out, it's coming out, so.
If we just let it be is what I'm saying. Somebody could stub his toe and fall.
If you're at least like, say you got a really bad spot, and you guys are at least making an effort to address like little spot at a time and at least showing progress, I mean, it's not negligence necessarily, right?
Well, Mark Freshall, there's the ruts from the tree that's in there. It's, it's.
Dusty is what that's to eat up.
It's dusty, like, I have a friend down that one.
Far from the edge of Ricker's property, clear down to Carol McDonald's.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we need to address that, would be a turn. Parks, Devin?
Uh, the only thing I have is, how much was that light a month?
Oh, twenty-five dollars.
So the light I talked about, maybe getting light over here to cover the park at nighttime, it was around twenty or twenty-five dollars a month for a light to put it on the pole.
An actual security light, not just a street light.
Yeah, actually pointing towards the park, hopefully light it up at nighttime, so. Um, if you guys wanna do something like that, we can.
So that would need to go on the agenda.
It's not enough money that you could just say, yeah, we'd like to do it, and then I would have a vote.
Month expense. I would like it, I'd like, I think it'd be good to, I mean, what was it, two summers ago, we had people smashing glass doors at nighttime over there? I mean, I'm not saying it would fix everything, but I think it would disturb it a little bit.
Yeah, hopefully this just won't give them light so they can really see what they're doing.
They can help, definitely.
Well, they don't need to have a security camera.
Yeah, but it's not gonna work if there's no light.
So if we have this light, that should.
It should help.
Let's get that light.
I picked it up my boy the other day, and it was pitch black out, so.
Yeah, I have a, I need stuff, yeah. Well, and then depending on what they're gonna do. Especially when they're coming in on the bus from the, uh, night activity.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah. Say for one light, so.
Okay, um, so, procedural light.
Okay.
General utilities, is there any unpaid water bills?
Nope.
Sanitation, Ted?
Um, it looks like the water's low. I don't know, she has about the same numbers every, every month, so. Said, uh, water usage is three hundred and thirty-one thousand gallons. Said water usage was three hundred and thirty one thousand gallons, average, seven thousand gallons per day, and our. The wa, wastewater flow was twenty eight thousand gallons per day. Well, she has two hundred and eighty thousand, and I think one of them zeros, that comes up every time, so. Anyway, I have. I've said something to Darwin about this, and he always says, these readings aren't what, what it is, so I don't know what. So we pay our person to do whatever to keep us legal, I guess, so it's whatever, that's all I can report.
One small thing, kind of petty, but, um, can we replace the flag out here? It's all rickety tatters and it's violating a flag code.
Agree.
Thank you.
Well, it's catching on eve right now.
It's all, yeah.
And it's gotta be at half staff to between eight and nine.
Soil.
It's catching, it's every time.
It's one of the stupid things that just drives me insane, if you're gonna fly it, fly it with respect.
No, I, that's a good point, thank you.
I remind you of one thing I noticed when the Christmas lights were on, for one, we do this all year now, right?
Yeah.
There, are we getting, we should really fix this before next Christmas, cause they are all up and down, and I think by the end, there was one flipped up in the gutter or something.
Doesn't even, we need to replace it.
Okay, just an observation.
That's another thing I'd like to, I'd like to see new Christmas lights too, that's another thing. Oh, oh, oh.
Does it remind us that, of that again in about August, September?
Okay, nice. I have six children's birthdays before that.
Yeah, it'll be done by then.
Um, public safety, is there anything? I don't think so. Need to build a light? Start thinking about what to do with, to kind of replace that. I mean, as we're thinking about budget, that top.
I guess I, I just.
The top of the.
Please, this, please, that four foot section.
That four foot section.
Four by eight. That's what we already, yeah.
I don't have a problem with it, I just thought we weren't doing it.
Well, I didn't, we didn't do anything with it because at the, at that point in time, we didn't know what to do with it. Right?
Well, we talked about that, because they said it wouldn't be able to replace this garage sound.
Right.
Any more than that.
Wasn't that by, we were acoustic on the ceiling?
Wasn't it like thirty grand too or something crazy like that? It was, it is expensive to do.
But I don't, maybe we wouldn't have.
Well, they're as expensive as the ceiling is.
Maybe we wouldn't have to replace it with acoustical tile.
You just wanna take it down.
Clean it up.
Did you leave, make it like that?
Yeah, clean it up.
And you can't paint, if you paint it, it goes away with the absorbent.
Well, you're, I mean, you could just probably paint over it.
Call it quits.
I mean, over that, it's.
Yeah, it might be.
I mean, it's not doing any good anyways.
Absorbs the.
I don't think it is anyway.
Well, you should have heard it before we ever put that in.
I'm sure.
That was, that was.
It'd be great that.
That was pathetic, yeah.
All right, is there any other business?
I did receive a quote today to upgrade that computer software. It's based off of QuickBooks, and QuickBooks is wanting to charge a thousand bucks this year to do it. To switch over is gonna be forty two hundred dollars, but that's half price, cause I was working with, he's upgrading and I played with his first thing of upgrading. But then after that, it's gonna be the same amount roughly as what QuickBooks is charging, and he started charging a little fee too. So at the end of the day, it's gonna be about the same amount, it should be easier to.
So where are you going to?
Um, it's Clerk Books, which is tied now to QuickBooks, but QuickBooks is getting harder to work with, and sometimes I have to shut all the way down and start back up, and. QuickBooks is.
Same company?
Yes, it's the same guy, he's just writing his own, and he's got people working for him.
It's called, what's it called?
Clerk Books.
No, he's.
We got QuickBooks now, what are we gonna be going to?
Clerk Books.
Oh, Clerk.
Yeah. That's the same guy.
Yeah, he's, um, out of Garner now, but he'd been city clerk at, remember Sperry's, I have, when he was in Iowa? I don't know, just west of Mason City, see, Clear Lake in there, he, he's been a city clerk, so that's always helpful.
So what's the cost, tell me again?
Four thousand dollars, forty two hundred dollars to switch, but then after that is the same cost.
Thousand dollars.
Twelve hundred a year between there, but, um, yeah. But I'm gonna have to do something because he's gonna quit servicing where it ties in with QuickBooks.
Let's be, we don't have an option, do we?
And they've been a good company to work with, so I keep hearing all these other horror stories, so not include them. There's a couple of them out there that, uh, horror stories.
So it's still a housing situation, it's big.
Yeah, it's still be the two thousand, weirdly.
That's what we're taking down.
That's what we're paying now. And QuickBooks just keeps going up, it went up two hundred bucks this year.
But if he's not gonna service it?
Yeah, he's eventually gonna quit servicing what it connects with, with books, so to do utility going. So anyway, I'll put that on the agenda for next month.
So then we need to put that into our budget a little bit, or put that?
I'm not sure how soon he can do it. I could put it in the budget and then if we get it done this year, I'll just do a budget and then that.
Oh, so you don't know?
Yeah, I'm not sure how fast he.
Yeah, what's putting in there, that's, that's a chunk.
It is a chunk.
Can I have one of those books? Yeah. Could you calculate gas in there for the, um, pumps?
The tanks?
Tanks, did you put?
Fuel, oil, I mean.
I haven't put it in expenses yet, but it's not gonna be a whole lot more than a lot of expense in any way. Cause it'll come in and go out, we'll just pay a bigger chunk in advance, so it should be pretty. And then they had an email from that same company that I'm not sure, but it gives you different, I printed it out.
Is there any other business? Their motion to adjourn? So I can, all those are good, say aye.
Aye.